Okay, good evening. This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen. This is the Town of Eastline Notice of the Public Hearing regarding the following ordinances. The first will rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with great justice, law,
Okay. It's all handed? Do you want to?
I've seen people die under that flag. I'm not going to talk to this shit. Any law you come up with, buddy.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So, this is the public hearing for the following ordinances. I have.
Sure. Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing regarding the following ordinances entitled: Ordinance establishing a Youth Family and Human Services Commission, amended clarifying membership capped at seven members; Ordinance establishing fees for building and demolition permits, amended revised building fees; Ordinance establishing zoning fees for geographic information systems, GIS, amended fee for certification. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 19th, at the Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider amendments to the following ordinances entitled: Ordinance establishing a Youth Family and Human Services Commission; Ordinance establishing fees for building and demolition permits; and Ordinance establishing zoning fees for geographic information systems, GIS. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinances are on file for public inspection at the Office of the Eastline Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastline, Connecticut, on the fifth day of March 2025.
Thank you, Hannah. All right, so is there anyone here tonight that wishes to address the Board of Selectmen regarding these three ordinances? Anyone here that wants to comment on the three ordinances? Anyone else that's here that wants to comment on the three ordinances? It's about four after seven being done. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is closed. This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of March 19th, 2025. We're in the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. We're starting at about 7:05. We've already recited the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? All right, being done. Are there any public delegations that wish to address the board tonight? Please, if you would, go to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Sure. Is this in the right spot?
We can move it up a little bit if it's not in the spot where you want it. What's up with that?
That's fine.
You okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Conrad Seifert. I live at 10 Wildwood Drive, Niantic, part of Eastline, as you all know. I'm here briefly tonight to speak about what is known as the glass ceiling in politics, and also how my late wife, Beth Hogan, helped break that glass ceiling when she ran for first select person in 2005 and won against an eight-year incumbent. The glass ceiling is unusual to me in this day and age. It means that women have a harder time getting elected to political office than men. It seems to be gender-based. Women have a harder time rising to be CEOs of Fortune 500 companies. Again, seems to be gender-based. In 2005, Beth ran against a four-term incumbent, and I looked up the vote count. It was 2,864 for her, 2,474 for the opponent, so she swept all three districts. She was a graduate of Stanford High School, Boston University undergraduate degree, Kuni-Piak Law School degree. She was also my law partner and very, very committed to this community. I don't have a lot of things to really say here, but kind of channeling what she might say if she were here. I am going to dwell on Sunday's New London Day and this very large article, "Women Encouraged to Pursue Leadership Role." And this was a workshop given in New London by Patricia Russo, who's Executive Director of the Campaign School at Yale. And the event focused on increasing the number of women in public service. And I had never heard of the Campaign School at Yale, but it is a nonprofit, and they hold one-day training events called the Basics for people thinking about running for office, working on a campaign, or becoming a more effective leader on an issue in their community. It started 29 years ago, and it is a nonpartisan political campaign training program. It doesn't have an agenda in favor of either party. Its mission is to increase the number of women in the political pipeline. And it was wonderful to see such an in-depth article, because the statistics I'm about to read into this record quite surprised me. They cited a recent, the Campaign School at Yale cited in a recent news release that in 2024, women lost five seats in the Connecticut General Assembly, where they hold 34.3% of the 187 seats. This is a lower percentage than the 35.6% of seats women hold in the United States Congress. And they also noted that women of color are even more underrepresented. Windsor Mayor Nusheh Black Burke was one of the panelists, and she attended the same training last year. She told the day that some of the biggest challenges women face in running for office is that sometimes women don't like to ask for support for their campaigns and don't believe enough in themselves. She said there are also not many places that train women for public office. And she said that this training gave her more tools to campaign, be more visible, and communicate the message. I would just add that I think it's critical that men and women and people of all ages try to get a little bit more involved in politics if they want true democratic representation in government. I don't quite frankly understand why more people are not involved. How did Beth do it? It's very similar to how the incumbent Republican lost and Nick Menepace, if I'm pronouncing his last name right, won. Beth did this, he did this. They go door to door. They shake hands. They meet people. They're involved in their community. And if you lose, you get back up and try it again the next time. After Beth passed away, Congressman Courtney put a speech in the Congressional Record, and I'm just honoring the life of Beth Hogan. And apropos to this limited topic, I just want to read the following what Congressman Courtney said, because this is how Beth recruited people, this is how she got people of all ages and genders involved in politics. Quote, "Beth had a knack for recruiting other selfless individuals into local politics. She never missed an opportunity in this regard and was the driving force behind adding members to her town's Democratic Party. Her proficiency in finding new advocates, candidates, and volunteers across all ages is exactly why Beth served as the Chair of the Local Parties Committee for a total of nearly two decades. Because of Beth, there is an army of visionaries and changemakers who will now march forward in their own relentless pursuit towards a better town and region. In fact, her love of community saw Beth in her final days delegating projects to her trusted friends and colleagues in local politics." So I conclude that with kind of a two-part message, we need our voting citizens to become more involved. If the glass ceiling had been broken a little bit, it looks like we, here in Connecticut, we've regressed a little bit. And again, this covers both parties. I'm not making a political statement. With that, I have nothing further to say, and I really thank you for the time and letting me make this statement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
It's an important message.
Yeah.
Are there any other individuals who would like to address the Board of Selectmen tonight? Being done, it appears, we can move on to approval of the minutes, first of which is the Special Budget Meeting of March 3rd, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the Special Budget Meeting minutes of March 3rd, 2025, as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion or changes?
Yes. So, under motion four, I moved the motion, and then it says it was seconded by me, and it's supposed to be seconded by Ms. Carlson.
All right, we'll note that change. We have that, Sandy? We'll do it now.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? So, then with that modification, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone upstanding? Being none, that motion carries. Next is the Special Budget Meeting of March 5th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the Special Budget Meeting minutes of March 5th, 2025, as submitted.
Any comment upon review of those minutes, changes? Oh, do I get a second? I'm sorry. Oh, is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, okay. Discussion, any changes? All right, not hearing any. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone upstanding? Motion carries. Next is the Regular Meeting of March 5th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the Regular Meeting minutes of March 5th, 2025, as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. Do we have any discussion, any changes or corrections? There are none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar.
Move to approve the Consent Calendar for March 19th, 2025, in the amount of $2,741.62.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There's none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're going to turn to new business. First on the agenda for the new business is schedule the town meetings for April 2nd. One is the bond resolution for the Town Hall Modifications and Americans with Disabilities Act, and then a bond resolution for Eastline High School Aquatic Center roof. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of Eastline to be held on Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, at the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $550,000 for the Planning, Design, Construction, and Improvements to the Town Hall and Authorizing the Issuance of $550,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriations, Impending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Two, to consider an act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $550,000 for the Planning, Design, Construction, and Improvements to the Town Hall and Authorizing the Issuance of $550,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriations, Impending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Three, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled, "Resolution Amending Various Resolutions," including: One, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $7,285,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $7,285,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." It's like, aye, aye. Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $3,735,000 for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of $3,735,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Aye, aye, aye. Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $1,130,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $1,130,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. And four, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $1,180,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $1,180,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Four, to consider an act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Amending Various Resolutions," including: One, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $7,285,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $7,285,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Two, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $3,735,000 for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of $3,735,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Three, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $1,130,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $1,130,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. And four, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $1,180,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $1,180,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. Five, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting, dated at Eastline, Connecticut, this 19th day of March, 2025, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We're all pretty much aware of the purpose for these bonding resolutions, repair the Aquatic Center roof, and modifications here to comply with the ADA. Is there any further discussion?
I don't want to drag this on too long, but do you have kind of like a list of items that need to be ADA accessible?
It's not...
The bathrooms are a issue.
So, it's not specifically spelled out in the resolution, but I can tell you some of the items, if that's helpful.
Yeah. Someone asked me today, and I wasn't able to answer.
Yeah, so, the big items are we have to have a lift. It's not really an elevator, but it'll be a lift. It'll go in. I think it'll be sort of out in the hallway, and it'll go downstairs. It's in here with trouble cause offices, public works, so that someone can come in here with a wheelchair on this floor and get down to the lower level.
Okay.
So, that's an expensive proposition, putting in the lift. The other thing is to modify the ramp access, so it's at the right angle. The ramp access that we have right now is too steep, so that has to be modified, and they've got a plan for changing that ramp to make it easier for those in a wheelchair to get into the building. Other items, we're changing the heights of the water fountains. They've accomplished that. That's been done. Also, the heights of the counter space in the Town Clerk's office, so that they're at the right height for someone in a wheelchair. So, those are the major items. But there may be some incidental items as well that I haven't listed, but that's most of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other questions or discussion? Being done, do I hear? We have a motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you get a second on that? You did? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. So, the April 2nd. Okay, we have some appointments to the Town Building Committee.
All right. Move to appoint Alyssa Bradley of 20 Church Lane, Eastline, as a member on the School Building Committee for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on December 1st, 2025.
Okay. Is there any? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We're going to reactivate the building, Town Building Committee with this improvements on the roof, with the aquatic center, so we'll be relying on the Town Building Committee for oversight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Appreciate her service on the committee. Do we have any other appointments to boards and commissions?
Move to appoint William Derry of 212 R, Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, as a member on the School Building Committee for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on December 1st, 2025.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So, can I just ask a quick question? So, this is for a school building committee. Is this different from the town building committee, then?
I believe yes.
It is?
I believe so, yes.
I think it is, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's...
I think that...
We just created the ordinance that created the School Building Committee, which is the Town Building Committee plus two Board of Education members.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So, there are additions on to that.
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, understood.
Thank you, both. Okay, then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have another appointment? I believe we do.
Move to appoint David Castro of 3 Wildwood Drive, Niantic, as a member on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. Any discussion? Being done, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. There's some old business. We're going to adopt the following ordinances, hopefully.
Okay.
Let's see. All right, do I have a motion?
Move the following. Resolve to enact the following ordinances entitled, "Ordinance establishing a Youth Family and Human Services Commission," parentheses, amended clarifying membership capped at seven members; and ordinance establishing fees for building and demolition permits, amended revised building fees; and ordinance establishing zoning fees for geographic information system, GIS, amended to add fee for certification. As these ordinances were presented at the public hearing before the Board of Selectmen on March 19th, 2025, the effective date of the ordinances shall be 10 days after newspaper publication of the notice of their adoption.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being done, the motion's carried. Thank you. All right, on to ex officio reports. Jason, anything that you need to report?
I attended the Harbor Asset, sorry, Harbor Management Shellfish Commission last night. They have an ambitious to-do list that they're taking on. Fair Rent Commission will be next week.
Okay. Thank you. Hannah?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay. Candace?
I had Park and Rec, and I also have Youth and Family.
All right, anything that you want to note?
Nope, they're moving right along and doing great work.
They're perking along? They doing okay?
They're doing a great job.
Great, thank you, Candace. Don?
Yes. I've got some notes here from the Planning Commission, which was an extremely long meeting. There was an application, if I may use these notes, if you need them for record, that's fine, but a 20-lot subdivision on a little over 12 and a half acres of land that's currently zoned RU-80 on the south side of Holmes Road. Sandy, I've got these notes here, if you want to just have them after. During the public delegations, one person was for the project, and there were eight speakers against the proposed project. Single biggest objection, if you haven't, if you don't know the area, I drove there, is the narrowness of Holmes Road and the safety of the additional traffic that 20 homes could generate. I did drive there. It is extremely narrow, unsafe. Second biggest objection was a rural character, and the majority of the speakers chose to live there because of the isolation in that area. That's, I can't say it's too bad, but that's, the safety issue is very legit. The amount of lots is open. If it's an approved lot, then, you know, that should be secondary argument. There was a motion to continue the public hearing to allow staff additional time to review the project, and that was voted unanimous, okay, for that area. The second item for discussion tonight, there's an application for a new text amendment to create a new section, 12B SU-EMC, as a floating special use district with additional controls in Section 25.5 of the Eastline Zoning regs. That, apparently, from what I gather, is that it's the Tracus property. And Mr. Geisell wasn't 100% sure, nor was I or the board, of what a floating special use is. But it sounds like that somebody could actually move that to another area and take that and move it, just pick up a puzzle piece and move it to another area, the way it's explained. I didn't get that. I struggled with it.
Interesting.
Move what? The actual zoning can now be picked up and moved, that zoning float, that's the floating part. I thought it had to do with Dodge Pond. But the floating part would have to be, can move to another area and take that and float it to another area. And wait for further clarification, because it's still tabled right now. But I just want to mention that took a lot to get through.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah. It was also moved to find the proposed amendment for floating inconsistent with ELP-CD, as it allows commercial residential uses within a zoning district that only allows single-family housing nearly anywhere in the R40 district, on any parcel 30 acres or more. So, the zoning would be interchangeable.
So, do you know who brought that text amendment up?
The people presenting the case, the attorney presenting the case for the property.
Got it.
Okay. Pretty sure the deal is not dead yet, but we'll see what develops. Floating is not a term I can speak confidently on. The last thing, there are two applications, two separate lines, for text amendments for zoning regs that would refer to drive-through facilities and outdoor dining facilities that were approved by planning and then sent off to zoning. So, I don't know, they did not list specific addresses or what it was, but I guess it has definitely, it's differently with state roads and town roads, as regarding drive-through and outdoor dining. So, I imagine it has to do with a town road. That meeting was like three and a half hours that night. But, so. And I have WellsCo tomorrow, which will run into the similar thing that Jason ran into last night with Harbor Management regarding a new proposal that they're going to make us more in charge, rather than having a DEP being in charge of some of the permitting and fishing and shellfishing in the waters there. So, I'll see what happens to that tomorrow and report back to you at our next meeting.
Thank you, Don.
Yep.
Thank you, Don.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I speak also on that? At Harbor Management, the Chair, Steve Dinsmore, suggested that the Board of Selectmen issue a statement, come up with some language identifying or in support of WellsCo being the official body that permits shellfishing activities in the Nyack River. His commissioners were totally sold on it, and the board did not, or the commission did not take, did not move to have an official statement done, but it's kind of like in line with what Don's saying, that this is an issue that's popping up at different boards. It's bill HB oh six nine four one, I think. That's the driver of these discussions. Is that right?
I don't know the gold number, I just found out about this yesterday.
Yeah, HB oh six nine one four.
HB what? L O?
HB oh six nine one four.
Okay, thank you.
And you said it's, WellsCo wants to be the official body who controls, what was it?
So apparently there's some lack of clarity over who is, has the authority to issue certain permits for certain activities, and Steve Dinsmore, who's the Chair of the Harbor Management Shellfish Commission, wanted to make sure that we, as the Board of Selectmen, identify WellsCo as the body that issues the permits, that Board of Selectmen doesn't have the authority to do that, or Harbor Management does not have the authority to do that.
So they want language that supports WellsCo as having, being the relevant authority for.
Yeah, and I don't know if I would go so far as to say they want that because they didn't make a motion, didn't pass, but Steve was, asked me to bring that to you guys.
I'll find out more tomorrow because WellsCo does have permission to issue permits, but fishing permits and clamshell permits, that's not zoning permits or zone permits. They tried that before and didn't work out so well. But I'm just saying of a zone seventy field, but they have the authority to issue licenses for clamshell fishing. That was pretty much their priority, that's what they do. And dock permits on, you know, for people, the docks, you know, for approving docks on the river. So.
We could invite, is it Steve?
Yeah, Steve.
To address the board, we can put on the agenda in a future meeting, and they can explain what they're concerned about.
Just to get some clarification.
Yeah, we're looking for it, yep.
All right.
Should I extend an invitation, or does I go through Sandy?
Yeah, why don't you, you have the contact with them, let Sandy know, and we'll figure out, you know, what meeting's a good meeting, if it's not, the second might be busy, maybe the one after that.
All right, thank you, I'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, any other ex officio comments? All right. For Selectmen's report, so just a couple of things, really. I attend the, regularly I attend the progress meeting for the project at Route one sixty-one, I ninety-five overpass, and this last Tuesday, they outlined what the next several weeks are going to look like for the rest of March, and I'll be preparing for a lot of work that they're going to do in April. That work will be on two fronts. One will be the elevating and resurfacing of Route one sixty-one, grinding it down, putting in the gravel, and packing it down, and then resurfacing it from where the bridge is all the way down to Route one. So that's near Walgreens. That's what they did before on the other side of the bridge, and they were doing it in three sections before, that took about ten days for each section. They feel because the elevation that they have to raise the road is less, there are fewer businesses that they have to accommodate, they think they can do the whole job in one shot, not doing it in three different sections. They'll do it all at once. It'll probably take fifteen days, twelve to fifteen days total, to accomplish that, so it'll be a little bit less of an interruption than when they did it in the fall on the other side of the bridge. The other thing is they've taken out the steel off the old, the northbound lane of the old bridge, and now they'll be taking down the sidewalls and bringing it back in line with the sidewalls of the new bridge. That will, that'll probably, you know, I'm sure that'll interfere with a passage on Route one sixty-one, they'll have it down to one lane for periods of time. Most of it will be done at night, but that will be accomplished in April as well. So April is going to be a busy month down underneath the new overpass. But, you know, they're really working very hard to be as uninterrupted to the traffic flow as possible. I attended a ribbon cutting at a new business at The Mix, which is on the second floor at two twenty-seven Main Street. They have it at Sea Glass and Linen, so we welcome that new business to Main Street in Eastline, and we wish them well in their new business. And right now I've been busy with, of course, everyone knows we've been working on the budget. It's now largely in the hands of the Board of Finance. I've also been in the middle of renegotiating the UPSCU contract, which stands for United Public Service Employees Union, and we have ongoing negotiations, and hopefully in the next month or so, we'll have that wrapped up. So we're meeting periodically to move that forward and bring that to a conclusion. Pretty much that's it for me on my report. Are there any communications or questions about my comments? And it doesn't appear to be any public comment. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the March nineteenth, Eastline Board of Selectmen meeting at seven thirty-seven PM.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.